So I am going to call this meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Board of Selectmen. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Present.
John Samia.
Present.
Morris DiPaolo.
Present.
James Kane.
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Valerie Clemmie. Jeffrey Howland.
Present.
This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation as required by law. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for the particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of numbers first and then to staff members inviting each by name to provide comments or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six or mute your computer when you are not speaking so as not to trigger your camera feed or background noise. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. First item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one and February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one workshop.
Move approval.
Second.
There's no further comments. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The next item on our agenda is a seven oh five meeting with the Department of Public Works to discuss an annual report, projects, accomplishments, and operations. So I am happy to welcome Jeffrey Howland, who is with us with his team from the DPW. And I'd like to start just by thanking you and your team, especially the Highway Department, for all of their efforts in keeping the roads clear. This has been a very busy storm cycle. It seems that the minute one is cleaned up, another one comes down the pike. So thank you for that hard work and effort.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of the Department of Public Works, I have with me tonight, Dan Rowley, Superintendent of Water and Sewer, Keith Baldinger, Public Buildings Division Manager, Nick Repetka, the Highway Division Manager, David Snowden, the Business Manager, and Andy Truman, the Town Engineer, Angela Snell, the Superintendent of Public Facilities, and Kevin Esposito, Parks Cemetery and Grounds Division Manager cannot be here tonight as they have a Parks and Cemetery Commission meeting tonight. So first, we would like to express our appreciation of the Board for giving us the opportunity to provide you the Department of Public Work accomplishments in two thousand and twenty. As you all know, two thousand and twenty was a challenging year filled with uncertainty, changed expectations, and not knowing what lies around the next corner. However, we are here tonight to put a positive spin on last year by highlighting DPW's initiatives and accomplishments. When two thousand and twenty began, each of the division managers had high expectations of what we wanted to accomplish for the year and were working on how we were going to get there. We had worked on goals for each of the division, all with visions of making both their individual divisions and DPW as a whole more efficient. We were moving towards a very robust year with a lot of projects and programs on the drawing board. Then a couple of days leading up to March sixteenth, a wall was put in front of us with, along with everybody else. We had less than twenty-four hours to make monumental changes to DPW operations to meet what was at that time an unknown future. We made some mistakes or missteps like everyone else did, but honestly, we can, you can be assured that we are very proud of how staff reacted to the complete upheaval to their daily routines. We asked staff to work from home originally, we thought for three weeks, then it was a month, then it was, who knows? Who would ever thought we were going to allow staff to work from home as if they were sitting at their own desk? But we did, and for the most part, we succeeded. We had some hiccups. We altered, changed, but persevered. I believe that when we get back to normal, we'll be better than before. Many good things have come out of COVID that I hope remain and are long lasting. So tonight, our main, our main objective is to showcase some of those accomplishments we have done over the past year. But I want this to be an open dialogue between the Board of Selectmen and the leadership team that's here tonight. And so as we go through the PowerPoint presentation, we'll go division by division. But I ask that you, if you have a question, please ask the question while we're giving the presentation. But we will take a break, pause after each division to ask if you have any questions, if you have any follow-up, but I want this to be an interactive between us and, and you. So again, what we're encouraging questions, we're encouraging comments, and we're encouraging feedback. So first, the Water Division. Val, we can, perfect. So obviously, Water Division is a division that keeps getting brought up at almost every town meeting for the last four or five years. It seems to be the focal point of a lot of the discussion. Two thousand and twenty saw a lot of improvements that were made in the Water Division. And I'll start with the first one, which actually started in the fall of two thousand and nineteen, was the unidirectional flushing. We were able, we weren't able to complete any of the zones in two thousand and nineteen because of early weather. But we were able to finish Zone Five, which is the area mainly north of Main Street and on both sides of Boylston Street. And we were able to finish Zone Five just prior to the end or the beginning of COVID. So we finished that in March of two thousand and twenty. We had, we started at that time also then to Zone Six, which was the area just south of Main Street. However, COVID hit. We ran into some valves that need to be replaced, and we made the conscientious thought or that we would not continue at that time because we were going to have to shut people's water off. And if you recall back in the early beginnings of COVID, that was a major concern. Washing your hands, continuously washing your hands and to turn people's water off for a day would, would not have been a good choice. So we elected not to continue with the unidirectional flushing. As the numbers came down with COVID in the fall, we went back to continuing the flushing, but at that time, we went to Zones One and Two. Zones One and Two are the, in the low zone, which is just east of the plant, but up near the Gulf Street area, Cypress, Sewell Street, Clinton Street. In that area, which is Zone One, and Zone Two is the area down where Lakeway Commons and that portion of just north of Route Nine. Those zones were, had heavy amounts of manganese in the pipes. Some of those pipe or some of those hydrants took eight to ten hours just to clean. Some of those hydrants were very difficult to clean, and those lines were clean. However, I can honestly say that we've had two cases that where I'm aware of, one in Zone One and one in Zone Two, that since November have put water, water filters in, has sent and have checked their water filters recently and have no traces of manganese coming into their residents. We do plan on in the spring, once the weather breaks, to go back to finishing Zone Six or, and to start working on Zone Seven, which is also in the reduced high area near the center of town. The reduced high and the low pressure zones are the two zones that we received most of our water quality complaints back in, prior to two thousand and nineteen. So far, from what we can tell on the unidirectional flushing, it's been highly successful. We have to the point where I believe that the Water Department and the maintenance craftsmen that are in the field understand why and the importance of flushing the lines and that they've expressed interest that they are wanting to do that in the future and moving us forward. The water main improvements, in two thousand and twenty, we finished the FY nineteen water main improvements, which were the Main Street Services and the Walnut Street from Main Circle to Haldondo Drive.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Kane.
If I understood the, the desire earlier, is if we have questions, we should ask them as we go along?
Yeah.
Definitely.
Relative to the unidirectional flushing, I think the best way to tell if it's working or not is by the overall number of complaints, Jeff, and where do we stand on that?
As far as I know, we have been receiving very few complaints on water quality issues. If it's just straight manganese, again, we've addressed most of the areas that we've had our most complaints, and we have, those complaints have come down significantly. To be honest, we haven't, we rarely hear about a complaint. Yes, we'll hear them if we have a water main break, et cetera, but those are to be anticipated. We have not received complaints like we were before, and we had several locations which they were changing filters very routinely. And at least two that I'm aware of put new filters in back November or even in October and have just recently checked them, and they're like they, we put them in yesterday.
Okay, great. Perhaps as Kevin has kept such great track of everything related to COVID, in the not-too-distant future, you could go through department records and provide by month for the Board's review of the number of complaints received for our water quality information. I think that's the true measure of how the, the effort is either resulting in the desired outcomes or not. So that would be very helpful, and thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
I just, well, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, no, I was just going to say, so we do have, we do keep records of the water quality complaints, so that's, we can do that.
Do you have another question, Mr. Samia?
Yeah, a quick question on valves. We were talking about valve replacement and exercising valves. How did that end up? I think early on, we were thinking to be a lot higher failure, exercising valves that had been under asphalt or hadn't been moved in a long time, but that the initial report was, we didn't have as many failures as we thought. How did, how was that come out now that we've gone through Zone Five, Zone Six, but Zones One and Two? We were looking at a potential cost in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. How, how have we done?
Well, first, you are absolutely correct. We made the assumption that we were going to have to replace or repair up to ten to twenty percent of those valves, and we had very few. There's only two that, that we definitely repaired that I recall. And Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, we had one at this, the intersection of Holman and Spring Street. And then we had, well, we had one at, on Route one forty, which is actually the time that we stopped just opposite of Wesleyan. Which is what, written, we actually stopped back in March of two thousand and twenty. We do know we have some valve replacements. They're, they're very old ones in Wesleyan Terrace, and we have a list of others in Zone Six. Zone One and Two actually went very well. But a couple of things that came out of the unidirectional flushing, which is what our consultant had told us way back in the beginning, was don't be surprised if you find valves that you thought were closed that are open or valves that are open that you thought were closed. So we actually did find those. So in, it sort of was a, bless, we found one on a sandpiper, which is down the Audubon development that actually we had no idea that it was off. It was buried below the asphalt. It didn't, it affected the system, but it was only affected the system when we had to do a shutdown and couldn't figure out why. If we shut down Valve A, why the whole system after that went down, went dry? When in reality, it shouldn't have, but we were able to find that. And to be honest with you, that was probably buried when Sandpiper was originally paved back in early, mid nineties. Because it was clear that that box, the valve had never been brought to grade. So we did find those, and actually those were good things. And we were told that that would happen. We know, so Hydratech, which was the contractor that did the unidirectional flushing for us, did give it, has given us a list of some valves that we'll need to replace moving forward. There is one, if I'm not mistaken, Dan, in Zone Eight, and a couple in Zone Six, which is the Wesleyan Terrace, and there's a couple of others. But we fared much better than we anticipated with our valves.
Zone Seven that we have, we have to go back to, excuse me. Put Zone Seven and Eight.
Thank you. Moving on to the, the water main improvements. So we were able to finish the FY nineteen. Again, it was delayed because of the onset of COVID. We held off on the contractor who, when they came back from the winter of, from nineteen into twenty, was the first thing he was going to do was do the, the Main Street Services. But again, that was potentially going into people's houses, and we elected not to, we held the contractor off before we continued with the water main service replacements along Main Street, which we finished, I want to say, early to midsummer. And then we moved on to Walnut Street and finished Walnut Street. The FY twenty, which is Main Circle, School Street, and Saybrook Road, was originally put out to bid. We received very high numbers in the beginning, but we'd also had delayed town meeting. So we ended up putting the project back out on the street, got favorable numbers, but with it being so late in the season, by the time we would have awarded the contract, would have been September of October. And both of those, the three-section school streets, Saybrook and Main Circle, we wanted the contract to be able to finish that before, you know, basically, put it all in the main, do the services, and then repave that section before we moved on to the next one. And we've, and both working with the contractor, and we felt that that, he was not going to be able to finish any of the three sections before winter hit. And so it was elected they'll start this spring when, you know, April, May-ish timeframe. But then, and that's the FY twenty, and we are now working on the FY twenty-one water main replacements, which we will put out to bid this spring and had, so that we have a number for town meeting. We did do some other water main improvements. And they really weren't improvements. We had to repair the, the water main that got damaged over the Route or over the Main Street Bridge over near Cross Ward Hill by, by Spring Street. That was damaged by the Mass Highways Contractor who was putting in a handicap ramp at that location. That water main going over that bridge is, at best, nine inches deep, below grade. It's high, it's insulated. It goes up over a fairly large box culvert. And the contractor broke that while installing the handicap ramp. That was repaired this fall with all new insulation across that bridge. So I, I, the, the water main improvements that we did, we did extensive amount of work. And again, we were delayed because of COVID, but I think we were able to finish and accomplish quite a bit of replacement during this past summer. Pilot testing. Hex.
Madam Chairman.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Kane.
Before we move on, Jeff, from water main improvements, you, you may recall that during Main Street to Walnut, I expressed my displeasure to Kevin several times. I would ask that you guys go back and make sure it's clear as day as to what type of condition a contractor is to leave the road in every evening. And certainly on Fridays, because I would argue that that contractor was allowed to run amok on Main Street and through Walnut Street. And it ought not happen again. And I would argue the horrible ride we have on Main Street today is a direct result as to what I would describe as a near complete lack of oversight for how that was backed in every, every evening. So I would ask that you go back and really crystal clear, be crystal clear on who has what obligations at the close of every evening and on the close of, prior to every weekend, before we go off and run into like situations during this construction season. Thank you.
Duly noted. Pilot testing. We are, we have completed the pilot testing for hexavalent chromium. Pilot testing started in September and was completed in the first week in December of, of two thousand and twenty. The report, we are awaiting the report from our consultant and from the pilot tester. And once we receive that, that will be forwarded off for us to, for review, and then ultimately to DEP. We have started the process for the PFAS pilot testing. We are waiting for approval from Mass DEP on the method. And the actual media that we will be using will be probably testing four or five different media types. I think there's three resin medias, there's one other media, and then there is Ion Exchange, if I'm not mistaken. We're hoping to start that shortly. Probably within the next month, the contractor who will be doing the pilot testing is ready to go. That is a six-month pilot test. So if we start in the spring, we'll be finishing sometime in the fall. Part of the issue is, is we got to make sure whatever testing, pilot testing that we do would not conflict with both our existing treatment train, but also that that won't conflict with a potential hexavalent chromium. We do continuously, on a quarterly basis, test for hexavalent chromium and for PFAS. The numbers that we have been receiving are very similar to the testing results that we have received in the past. They do fluctuate here and there, but for the most part, they have remained the same. One of the issues of why the, heck, the PFAS is being a little bit delayed is we are, have a well at Sewell Four, which has our highest concentration of PFAS, is currently not in commission, or we have a, a we have a well a pump issue over there that we are working on first before that we can actually turn that back on for full volumes as we have in some issues with potential stray current on the well. So which we are addressing through our consultant and through a consultant that Selco has recommended for testing for stray current.
Jeff, can I jump in and ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
So with the pilot testing on the Hex Chrome, is the website updated to reflect that? Because I know that that was something that residents had some concerns about and might be looking for information around where we are. And I just wasn't sure, because the last time I was looking at the website for that information, I couldn't find it.
I don't believe it, yeah, I don't believe it has been updated. We were sort of holding off until we actually received the results itself, but we can at least let people know that we have done the pilot testing, and we are still awaiting results.
Great, thank you.
Staff training and licensing. So one positive out of COVID was we were, spent some time and our operation staff has been able to spend a little time and doing some self-training, but also has improved on their licensing capability. We have several maintenance craftsmen. We have several other people that have received further licensing than what they had prior to COVID, and I think that that is a huge bonus. We have done training. Unfortunately, mostly with Zoom, but we have done training. We've had some guys do in-person training depend on, for instance, we've trained five guys in cross connections. We've trained other people in cross connection surveys. And we have we have people that have received their T-two, their D, they've gone for the D-one and T-one. We have people that have gone for the T-one, T-two, and T-three licenses, and we have had Betmore Training at the plant for several water operation guys who are interested in learning about the plant. We have also, due to retirements and people leaving the Water Department, have had the opportunity of changing the sort of the hierarchy of the Water Department or Water and Sewer Division by, by promoting our, our treatment plant operator to an Assistant Superintendent of the Treatment Plant. And we have added an Assistant Superintendent of Operations. And this is gives us a little bit more flexibility. It also separates the plant from operations, which I believe should be the case as it gives the Treatment Plant Operator a direct access to the Superintendent and not having to go through a foreman. The Assistant Superintendent of Operations basically replaces what was used to be historically the foreman. We hired a gentleman by the name of Joe Kenny, who came from the East Brookfield, Veer, Bellingham, Veer Holden Water Departments. And he comes with a very good resume and gives us a new, a different look on our Water Department. I think it's been a, so far, he's been here then two months. He started just prior to Christmas, and he's already added a different spin on the Water Department, which I think is good. We have asset management. For the first time, we are actually taking a look at our above-ground assets. So we had Suez come in and conduct an assessment of, of five out of our six above-ground tanks, both inside and out, and have given us recommendations for short-term and long-term improvements and sort of put us on a path to start looking at repairing or or a base, yeah, basically, not so much repairing, but repainting and cleaning it on a more of a routine basis, mainly so we don't end up losing some of these tanks, especially the steel tanks. And has given us a much, or a pretty clear path of, of when and why we should be repairing or repainting some of these. We've also had Taylor and Howard conducting above-ground assets on our booster stations, our treatment plant, incorporating in the tanks and looking at our, our pressure regulating pits, even though that's below grade. We are, we are asking them to look at that. I think there's four of them that we have that basically are, we used to use prior to the Temple Hill pumps, or Temple Hill Tank, which regulated the flow between our high and our reduced high. We're evaluating whether or not these pressure reducing valves are actually necessary. Now that the Temple Hill, which has been in online since the nineties, we're not sure if we actually need those, but we are looking at we're not sure if we actually need those, but we are looking at them. And we're also wondering if they need, should be in the right location. We do know we have some pressure problems when we have low pressure in the reduced high over on the High Street area and parts of Spring Street. So we're debating, we're wondering if we're, if they're in there actually in the right location, if assuming that we do need them because we do have one on Main Street, which is right opposite of South Street, right in the Carlton Carlton Lane location. It's the, the pit is literally, I wouldn't say it's right on top of the signal or right below the signal, but it's pretty darned close to it. And we have a very difficult time actually maintaining that. Where we had troubles when we replaced the water main of reconnecting that with the new water main because we were interfering with the, the signal and the conduits going to the signal. So and, but we also questioned if that's actually in the right location. We would prefer if we, if it's needed to actually relocate it to maybe High Street, where we have a, definitely we have an issue and it's the farthest reach of the reduced high to the high. But Tater and Howard is looking at that. They have the draft report to us. They do not have the pressure reducing valves or reducing valves in there yet as we're waiting to warmer weather because we have to flow some hydrants, just to make sure that they are actually functioning as they were originally intended. Do you have any questions or follow-up or commentary that you'd like on the water department?
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Jeff, we have a, a plan that Tater and Howard did analyzing the water distribution system and what water lines, et cetera, needed to be upgraded or replaced. Is, is, is that, that's getting kind of old, isn't it?
It is getting old and we are still chipping away at it, though we have replaced most of the tier one and tier two water mains that they had indicated on there. I think the last one left, and I think Andy's on here, I think the last one left is the Holden Street to Clinton Street section. Which is on the tier two. Well, we do have very low water pressure and we, and to be honest, we saw, we actually found that even while we were doing the unidirectional flushing as we shut a valve off and didn't realize that we were actually going to shut water off to that entire neighborhood. So again, that even though we knew that that was gonna, we knew we were going to have issues, but we didn't know it was going to be that bad. So it actually helped us fully better understand our system.
Is the, is the study still current then, or are we going to have to do one of those soon?
I think that, that the way, I think the system itself or the study itself is still valid. We're just moving from the phase or the tier two into the tier threes, which again are more based upon older water mains, water mains that should start to be replaced. The, the first phase one and two, the majority of those were mainly due to, as a result of low fire flow that resulted in, when they flowed those hydrants, i.e. why we replaced the line in North Street to Vista, because that was, that was an issue with fire protection at Spring Street School. So a lot of those have already been addressed. But we are moving to the next tier and that's mainly based on age and, and material.
Great, thank you. Okay, that's one other question. Isn't there a water line on Route 20 or somewhere down in that area of Route 20? That's got some pipe and it's kind of a dead-end route. Whatever the pipe is, need, should be replaced. Can't think of the name of the kind of pipe. Somewhere down near Heavitts, isn't there something down there, a dead end or something?
Yes. So, so there is a, a long dead-end line that goes from Cherry Street to, for all intensive purposes, Yellow Freight, which is down near Commerce Road, which is in our reduced high zone. It's a vinyl clad AC. And that was, is scheduled to be partially replaced by the, the 40B project, which we are still awaiting for. It's in their agreement to replace that water main.
Okay, thank you.
It is, it just so, oh, it's a 12-inch water main that is, that does its dead end at Yellow Freight.
Okay, thanks.
Want to move on to the sewer?
Sure.
So sewer, little less glamorous than water, but so sewer, we actually did quite a bit of work on the sewer this year. Some of it, we actually started just prior to COVID, which was the BT pump station. We started that in the fall of 2019. By contract, that should have been completed, I think it was in June of 2020. But we did have some supply chain issues with mainly dealing with control, electric control panels, which were delayed until August or September. But that station, we have just recently given beneficial occupancy for, and we're going to start been able to use it. There is punch list items that can't be done until spring, but for all intensive purposes, that pump station is now complete. And so everybody knows the BT pump station is on the corner of Lake Street and Route 20. It's on the property of Barton Triemount, which is the BT. It was not intentional as the Bob Tzieski pump station, but we're going to leave it as BT and use your imagination if you'd like, but it is Barton Triemount. As part of that same project is the Route 20 improvements, which brought the sewer, which reverses the flow of the, of, of the pump station in that section of the town and moves it from sending it to Rolfe and then up to Maple, then to Westboro and revert, it reverts the flow and sends it down the Route 20 new force main that we installed along Route 20, along Lake Street to the city of Worcester. We debated whether to put that contract out. We literally was going out on the street second week, third week in March and debated whether or not we should continue to hold off. What should we do? We made the now correct decision to move forward because A, we didn't know what was going to happen. Should we do it? Should we not have them work at all? The contractors that we received the bids from was, gave us extremely favorable numbers from a contractor that is not used to working in central mass, is a Western Mass contractor. But did a very good job on Route 20. And actually because of COVID, was able to get Mass Highway to allow them to do the work during the day and to have multiple crews mainly because traffic was so light. And they were able to, for all intents and purposes, finish that construction several months ahead of schedule, which was, was a huge benefit because if they had to work at night, obviously the residents in the area would have been upset because it would have been loud. It would have taken longer. They were not supposed to finish until sometime this spring. And they basically were finished last fall. They do have some testing. They still have some work at the pump stations to do. Some of it was, we had to wait till BT pump station was substantially complete before they could test the, the pump station. But they, that project went very well. We have connected to Worcester. We're just doing some little bit of stuff with the city to get approval to actually test and flow water, test water to Worcester, which we should be getting shortly. But because we received favorable numbers from this contractor, we are able to potentially look at doing face, part of phase two improvements. And part of that is a potential pump station up near Grafton Street, up near UPS in that vicinity, which will be partially funded through UPS, partially potentially funded by other sources. But it allows us to do the gravity line from Purington down Route 20 during, through the new construction area down to Lake Street. So that does allow us to do that. Again, we received very favorable numbers from the other.
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead, Mo.
Go ahead, Mo.
Sorry, Jeff, if we're going to run that pipe up Route 20, are they going to do it before they start doing the work on the improvements in front of Market Basket?
So, so right now it's part of the Mass Works Grant, so it's on that for that. And we're hoping that the numbers for the Mass Works Grant, which we're hoping is goes out on the street very shortly, that we don't need this, this money from what we already have allocated or appropriated. But if, if we, if the numbers for Route 20 improvements come in a little higher than expected, we, at least we have a potential source to do the sewer portion.
Okay. Great, thank you. Sorry, Jim.
That's fine, Mo, anytime. Jeff, just a quick question. Why would UPS be funding this? Or perhaps I misheard you.
No, so UPS, which is the existing facility on, on Route 140 and Route 20, has a basically a failed septic system. And we have met with them a couple of times and they would like to tie into Shoesbury Sewer. Now, as you recall, the Route 20 corridor is all within the needs area, so it's not an issue with the not in the needs area. But if they were to put in a modern 2021 septic system, they would be losing parking spaces and truck parking because of the side.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That makes sense now. Thank you.
SCADA upgrades. SCADA is the way that the pump station can talk with the sewer department without actually having to be there and sends out an alarm when there's high water, heat in the building, electrical failure, low water, pump failures. It still gives them a lot of information. We have replaced, as you know, through town meeting, as appropriated money for the last, who knows how long because it's been here, long as I've been here. And we have replaced, I believe it is 20-something stations with the current modern-day SCADA system. Right about the time that COVID started and it might be off a week or two, our other 17 stations SCADA system basically doesn't work anymore. Dan contacted our vendor who was helping us keep that system running and he walked into a meeting with us with actually, and no lie, three and a half inch floppy disks. And says, here you go. And they weren't in any order. They were just here. I don't know which one goes to what. And there isn't a machine now that can run those, run the SCADA system. So Dan was able to get a temporary fix for those 17 stations, which just sends a phone call to Dan, which wakes him up in the middle of the night to send them an alarm. We don't know what it is, but we are in the process of redesign or designing the remaining 17 stations to be put onto their current SCADA system. So that should be, that is being completed now. And actually, we just set up the dates for the bid opening and we should be, they'll be going out on the street in the next couple of weeks. We currently have funding for most of the upgrades, the SCADA upgrades already from previous warrant articles. We are, however, if, because we are doing SCADA upgrades, we're also requesting as part of this to provide a meter in SCADA at where the old Shoesbury wastewater treatment plant used to be, down just east of Ward Hill. And just so that we have some sort of, it's almost like an internal alarm. If we start seeing high water at that location, it'll, it'll definitely let, be able to us, let us know what the flows are at Westboro, but also gives us a sort of a tally as we go look at Westboro. Because at this point, we get Westboro numbers monthly and we have no way of verifying if those numbers are accurate. And I'm not saying that we disagree with Westboro. It's just it gives us more of an up-to-date, we'll know on Tuesday if we're, you know, let's say tomorrow we have, if this snow comes and it's actually heavy rains. Historically, that's when we typically have problems with inflight or II into the water, into the sewer system. And it will give us an idea going before it actually gets to Westboro. If we potentially could have issues and that, things that we can do. So we are requesting and they are designing a meter at, at the old treatment plant location, which will be part of the SCADA upgrades. At, at the request of the sewer commissioners, we have done an extensive working with our consultant, Weston Sampson, a very extensive, comprehensive, five-year capital improvement plan for the sewer department or sewer system itself. We've actually put in things that we are, have been on our anxiety closet for a long, very long time. What the force main that's on Main Street that goes from Fair Lawn up to Maple Ave and then Maple Ave to, is it Hutchins? Which is an AC force main, 18-inch force main that was put in in 1963. It's our original force main from our, one of our original pump stations, which is Rolfe Ave. The section from Rolfe Ave up to Fair Lawn, which is just, basically underneath the power lines on Maple Ave was replaced when they did the Main Street. Or I mean, sorry, when they did the Route 9 improvements back in the mid 2000s. But we've actually spent quite a bit of time looking at other potential issues and concerns. And then have come up with a very comprehensive five-year look improvement plan, which includes on there the Maple Ave replacement, or not replacement, but really major upgrades, Rolfe Ave improvements, and also looking at our, our under-pressure gravity line that runs from our old treatment plant to Westboro through the town of Northboro. We have not been able to really evaluate that line as, except we able to look at it briefly when the, the Northboro had the issue on Davis Road, what, 2012-ish or 10 in that timeframe. And we were able to look at TV some of it, but that line basically is under pressure 24/7. And so we really haven't had an opportunity to look at it. And that's part of the comprehensive plan is to actually look at that and evaluate it and just to make sure that that is still in good operating condition. In 2020, we, we moved two underground fuel tanks at, one at Harvey Place Pump Station, the other at Jordan Pond Pump Station. These two fuel storage tanks were actually put in sometime around 1963, 64, original two that, those two pump stations. We had no idea that they were there. We had assumed that they had long since been removed. We, as far as we know, we have not, these were gasoline tanks that were used for the generators. And as far as we know, that those, the gas had not been used at either of those two stations since the early 1970s. Probably back when for us older generation note, that was probably used when during the gas embargoes back in the 1972, if I recall. So it's probably when, when they converted it over to diesel. Or it might even been gas. I can't remember which at that time. So we knew, we found that they were there. We removed them or, and we thought that we, we really found them because we were replacing a or inserting an insertion valve in Harvey Place Pump Station. And those two are their sister stations. They were built at the same time. They were built exactly the same, was the same footprint. So we assumed Jordan Pond was there. But Harvey Place, if you know, that's right behind or right next adjacent to the lake, just north of Route 9. And we were concerned with that one potentially have leaked. And that's where we started this whole, okay, we need to remove it. We have a leak. Come to find out that the Harvey Place Pump Station was not an issue. The leakage that we had there was so minor, didn't require us to report anything. The leakage that we had there was so minor, didn't require us to report anything. That one was fine. Jordan Pond, however, we uh if we found out that that one had either leaked or somebody had overfilled it. And we do have an issue with that one, which we are addressing. Uh there is some minor um there was some minor spill back sometime pre nineteen seventy two. Uh that we are now in the process of testing and and getting DEP to approve a plan for us to uh remove whatever we need to. Does anybody have any questions on sewer? No, excellent.
Jeff, Kevin, oh go ahead Mo, sorry.
No, go ahead. I couldn't tell if you were gonna talk or not. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to I don't know how to to say this properly, but it's seven fifty already. We uh I know the board does want to touch on all aspects of the department. I think that um might need to just keep it a little bit of a higher level and then
Yep, okay.
Wait for questions.
All right.
Jeff, sue me, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jeff, um what up? You mentioned doing work at Harvey and right um Rolf Ave and Maple Ave. Um when we did that tour, it sounded like we're gonna have to do something at Harvey Place. Is that? Is that on the radar too?
Yes, actually, that will probably be, that'll be, so we're doing the design of How Ave right now and then Harvey is next.
You're doing How Ave? Did you say How Ave?
How Ave, yes. So How Ave is right at that very sharp corner. There's a pump station there and that's that's really a confined space problem there. Uh it's this pump station that was very similar to Jamesbury and Eaglehead Cove. Uh it's dangerous. You in order to replace stuff, you almost have to go in it. And we've had issues there with the electrical and we've had several uh backups because of that pump station. So that's actually being bid. Uh if it's not on the street, it's gonna be out any day now.
Okay, thank you.
Um move on to public buildings and Keith will give the presentation on public buildings in place of Angela.
Good evening, everyone. Um as Jeff said earlier, Angela and Kevin aren't here tonight, so Angela asked me to do this. Twenty twenty for both public facilities divisions uh. We know we did a lot of work related to COVID nineteen, you know, between the buildings and the parks, but I'll start with public buildings for our accomplishments. Um we applied for and received a hundred eighty four thousand dollars um in green community grant funds uh for five energy efficiency projects. And contracts were hired and completed all the the projects. We did uh replaced eight rooftop units at Parker Road Preschool uh that had reached their end of the end of life. And we also upgraded uh gym lights to LED both at Oak Middle, uh Floral Street School, um the field house at the high school. And and we replaced um some metal halide lighting in the Commons area at uh Shrewsbury High School also. Next thing is we assisted with logistics for the two socially distant town meetings, one outdoor and one indoor. Something we've never done before. Um the outdoor one, as you recall, was under the tent on the big top in front of Oak Middle School. And um the indoor one was at the field house um at the high school. So this involved, you know, the getting the tent rental company, uh media, um company involved. And then organizing staff for setup and breakdown of each event. Um another big thing for us is we advocated for a custodian for the Parker Road Preschool. Um that school has never had uh in school day service. We used to clean that building with a custodial contractor in the evenings. And um the daytime staff actually took care of all the spills and all that stuff that happens with preschool age children. Um they have multiple day and afternoon sessions and I think they have about sixty staff members um in that building. This is was with COVID nineteen, this has been a huge help for us. We actually do not have a contract cleaner there anymore. So the custodian uh splits his time between servicing the school during the day and then cleaning it after the school day is over. Next thing is we established new protocols due to the COVID nineteen pandemic across all public buildings. Uh we had to review the state guidelines for town buildings. Uh and school buildings and follow DSA guidelines for the schools, obviously, um in order to meet the new requirements. To have in-person learning or people to go back to work. Um this included items like procuring nighttime enhanced disinfection services. Uh to me, protocol, procured and completed a full HVAC assessment of all school buildings. Prepare for in-person learning prior to September. Um since then, we've also completed that at uh our, the rest of our public buildings um over the, over the fall. Um we worked with, uh we we procured and implemented contracted day custodians. We have twenty part-time day custodians that work uh in each schools in each day to help with um high-touch areas and cleaning up after lunch. Uh and stuff like that. And that's all using CARES Act funding. Uh we installed many personal protective shields in town hall, the library. Uh we helped with some custom ones in all the schools. And then we assisted with procuring PPE and cleaning supplies for all departments uh with the assistance of the Emergency Management Director. Uh that was a big challenge for us, getting cleaning supplies through the supply chain and determining how much to buy or how much not to buy. Um but I can say that we are in very good shape with uh those items. That's what we have for public buildings. If there's any questions, or I can move on to the Parks uh Recreation Cemetery.
Oh great, keep going. Thank you.
Okay. Well, Parks Recreation Cemetery, so they reviewed uh youth and amateur sports safety guidelines issued by the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs through various stages of reopening and implemented them on the local level. Guidelines were reviewed for the following areas such as sports groups, park use, uh Donahue Rowing Center Facility Use Program Guidelines. Uh gathering limits were reviewed several times for park activities and for funerals at the cemetery. And they installed a multitude of signs across all park properties throughout the year regarding mask use and social distancing. Um increased park usage despite decreasing sports group usage. Uh while many programs and sports programs were canceled due to COVID nineteen. Many of the facilities were busy as residents turned to the parks as a place to get outside and get some exercise or be able to meet with friends in a socially distant manner. Uh Dean Park and the State Boat Ramp were extremely busy uh this summer. Um also, the Recreation Division created pickleball line, pickleball courts at the Jordan Pond Tennis Courts. Uh in the late spring, the Parks Division hired a contractor to add these lines to the existing courts. And uh pick them, pickup games were held in the fall and uh will pick up again in the warmer months. Uh they created virtually and socially distant special events to keep our town's traditions going. Such as the virtual Memorial Day Ceremony that was held. Coordinated videos from the speakers at their traditional locations. And with the help of Shrewsbury Media Connection, at the video premiere on Memorial Day. The salute to veterans, a rowing rally was held to honor our veterans on Veterans Day at the World War One Memorial. Also, uh over three hundred handmade cards were collected from scouts and residents that were distributed on that day. Uh the the division encouraged residents to do outdoor walks and hikes. And work the Shrewsbury Public Library to install Story Walk books at the Lake Street Park, uh paved walking trail each month. The division also worked with a number of volunteers to help assist with projects while maintaining COVID nineteen protocols. The Parks Division relies heavily on these assistance of volunteers. Again, due to COVID nineteen, people were looking for socially distant, distant activities and volunteerism was up this year. Uh Eagle Scout Projects, two scouts and groups of volunteers assisted with brush clearing projects. And the Keep Shrewsbury Beautiful program started. Uh Town Cleanup Day was canceled in the spring due to COVID nineteen. And in the fall, they did their first fall town light cleanup. Had over a hundred people volunteer throughout the town. Also, small groups volunteer throughout the course of the year. The town provided bags. They picked up the full ones while the community groups provided the manpower. Any questions on those?
Thank you. I know that the community is quite happy to have pickleball courts, so much appreciated with that. We received quite a few letters about pickleball.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DePaula.
Keith, do you, do you um have any information on the, on the rowing center, on the the meeting house or whatever you call it? What the status or the condition of that building is in?
Um for the meeting house itself, I think the condition of the building is pretty good. I think there is some minor repairs that we did this year. The public buildings division helped with that. There are some issues with the shed that Angela and Kevin are working through now. But for the most part, I think the the building and the property is in decent shape.
Is it, is it used at all? It wasn't used for a long time, right?
No, so basically it's been closed for the past year. Um I think people so that, so they don't allow people to exercise in there anymore. I think the bathrooms are open for um it's not residents, but uh members for members. And um you know, people do take their boats out. I don't think there's any, has been any team uh use of this, of the building this year by the colleges or high schools, but essentially the the clubhouse has been closed.
Okay, thank you.
I I I think because of the new uh requirements from the state, Angela's actually meeting with the growing groups in the next couple of days. Uh might even be tomorrow uh to start looking at what, how to proceed forward with the next. And I, oh, I think she's also meeting with the City of Worcester Board of Health uh tomorrow to figure out how they can move forward with the next uh coming into spring. Because as soon as the first, the last bit of ice or probably halfway, once, once it's a little bit open, there will be people on the lake uh rowing. So they're trying to figure out, uh can eight, you know, yeah. The eight boats row, because before it was only the singles or the doubles. And the doubles had to be in the same household. But now they're hearing that they might be able to go with fours and eights. And then there's issues between NCAA requirements and MI or the state requirements and do they conflict? And so they're trying to work on that detail now.
Great, thank you. Move on to highway?
Moving on to highway and forestry. So in two thousand twenty, we did our, our annual chapter ninety improvements. Uh again, we put this out early in the year. We put this out maybe in April and in May or in early May. Knowing that we're gonna have a late town meeting, but we did put it out early and we actually received extremely favorable numbers this year. On, uh I think we did ten roads. Uh some of these have been on some of our, one of our worst roads of our uh on our road list. But we did Longfellow Road, Flanagan Road, Westport Circle, Brightside Place, Dolphin Road, Dana Road, Deer Grass Road, Torrey Lane and Torrey Drive. Uh we did uh milling overlays on all of those and did uh replaced catch basins on most of those to current standard catch basins. Now, we were able to do the catch basin replacements using our stormwater utility, which I'll bring up a little bit later in the next one, when we get to the stormwater. But we were able to do the drainage improvements using stormwater utility money, which will allow us to be able to do more paving in FY twenty one with with twenty one uh chapter ninety money. Uh so we are looking at at what the list will be for this coming year's uh pavement projects. Uh we are trying to spread out all the paving projects throughout the town, not just centered on one area. However, majority of the roads that are are, I want to say, on our pavement management plan, that are probably the worst on the list of mainly in District One, mainly because those, there's a lot of roads that were built in the nineteen eighties and early nineties that are in District One. Um so there's a good portion is there. Uh but we are working on the FY twenty ones now. Uh the milling and overlay project was fairly, went fairly smooth. Basically, we were completed, if I'm not mistaken, Nick, sometime in October, October, early November. We are currently doing in what was approved at town meeting in um for FY twenty one. We are doing a snow and ice optimization study. Uh which is a study that's looking at whether or not our roots are, are et cetera, for both road salting, it road plowing and sidewalk uh plowing. Uh we hired a company out of Minnesota. Uh it's very clear they're from Minnesota based on their accent. Uh but they are uh finishing that up. They should have a uh draft report to us by uh end of March, at least that's what they're aiming for. They just finished the discovery phase. Uh and uh they will be giving us, they've, we spend every Thursday morning, just talking to them about different uh scenarios and that them trying to understand the town and how we operate. Uh and I think that we will look to see, is our current method good or is there changes that can be made? And uh we're trying very hard not to bias what they come back with. We're trying to leave it open and let them come back and and model what we want. And then we potentially could use that model and actually give it, put it on our GPS and give it to each of the drivers and here's your route. It'll be a turn by turn directions of how uh to be the most efficient. Trying to bring down the the amount of time that the drivers are on each pass. But also trying to do it more optimizing the actual routes. So we should have that back sometime in March. We've always uh fall street sweeping, so as you know, under the stormwater utility, we were going to uh sub out our fall street sweeping. We put our contracts out twice, got zero bids twice. Uh ran into a big dilemma as that is a requirement of our MPDS permit through the EPA. So Highway Department said that they would at least attempt to do the fall street sweeping. Where last year, two thousand twenty was the second year. Uh they were successful in meeting our obligation. And the one thing I will say is with the fall street sweeping, what it's done is it actually has brought our spring sweeping uh tonnage down, which historically, whereas in the spring, we're up in the mid four hundreds. And now we are just doing the, when we do the fall and spring, we still get the same volume, we're just doing it twice. Uh it does take the Highway Department roughly four weeks or five weeks to do the street sweeping. Uh which then unfortunately then leaves us with less time in other parts. Uh or other things that they were normally doing in the fall, but it does take three or four guys uh about four weeks to complete that work. But we are meeting our obligation under stormwater by doing the fall street sweeping. Forestry, we have a new contractor this year that started in July of two thousand twenty. Which is Marquee Tree out of Billerica. And uh right off the bat, we had those bad windstorms that actually, one of them was we knocked that tree that fell down uh uh on Westwood that caused severe damage, took out seven poles or five poles. Uh that was like a week after they started. Uh but they have been outstanding and to date, they have removed over fifty trees for uh the forestry department, but they've also removed trees for the Parks Department and for public buildings. Uh they have been very responsive. Uh contract value is higher than our previous contracts, but uh the service has been outstanding to date. We are removing tree, only trees that have to come down, but we have seen a large uptick on trees that are, that are, that died mainly due to the gypsy moths. Where healthy oak trees, which have uh uh I believe the tree that fell on North Quinsig was a tree that was a live tree a couple of years ago, but gypsy moths uh basically killed the tree and that's the big limb that came down on North Quinsig again, causing power outages. Not sure if the tree was damaged or tree was, had to have been damaged, the one on Westwood, but that one was a very large limb that just the way it fell, took out numerous uh electric lines. And several of the other trees that have fallen, causing electric outages, have been caused by trees that have been damaged by gypsy moths. So but again, we have a new contractor and they've done an outstanding job and basically Mark and they're, and they work on it with Nick and they're there within a week or so. So it's been fairly good uh relationship.
Madam Chairman, quick question.
Madam Chairman, quick question.
Go ahead, Mr. Leva.
Um, relative to highway, considering all the things we speaking about admittedly, this is. Pretty minor, but I'm just curious, are we still in the uh brine pilot program or are we? Fully uh adopted it or did we abandon it and how's it been?
Last year was a poor year for brine as we did what we didn't have weather conditions that were conducive for brine last year. This year we were all ready to go with brine, but there's been issues of staffing problems at the city of Worcester, which they were not producing brine. Uh, we are sold on it. We I was hoping to be able to give you a report. Uh, which we still may do, but it may be briefer than what I anticipated. But when we did use it, we found it to be very successful in the areas that we did. I think we had one tank this year, Nick, if I'm not mistaken. And uh, we went to go back to get a second load and they weren't making anymore. But uh, we found it to be successful, so we are contemplating uh looking at our future where we are not reliant on the city of Worcester for the brine, but actually having our own. So we uh that's, but we are looking at that uh moving forward.
Thank you.
All right. All right, engineering and stormwater, so uh. Most of the stuff in engineering actually is projects, most of the stuff that they do actually is for other divisions, so they. Some of these I had to sort of, okay, what are we going to do for engineering? Uh, we did do the Boylson Streets Drainage Improvements, which was phase two in 2020. Uh, which basically went for just north of Gulf Street, uh, heading toward the cemetery. We completed that project. We it was designed and bid and again, we actually received very good numbers uh this past year for that project. Uh, we bid, uh, designed, bid and did the CA work on the Beale Street Sewer upgrades, which was to take a redirect the sewer. From Beale School and heading into Hillside Drive, uh, which goes behind the the field, the soccer fields of Shoesbury Youth Soccer. And then down to Hillside by the tank. Uh, the work has been completed. We do have some punch list items and uh. We will be uh, they're going to be doing that work this in this uh, well, they were going to start just before all the snow hit and now we're just waiting for the snow to melt so they can finish what they need to do.
Madam Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Kane.
When I first got on the board, I remember the engineering department used to target the future uh programs and then John Knight and his role on. I think it was an MPO level board and then Mo has served the town for years on on another level of MPO. They would then tag team to get projects funded because we had done the engineering. Jeff, can you uh update us as to where we are in that type of relationship? Are we still doing that? Uh, if so, what is our next project in which we're focused on doing the engineering? So we can hopscotch ahead of the money for the actual construction. Thank you.
Excuse me. So we do all of our chapter 90 designs. We do all of our water main designs. Uh, the bigger projects like the Main Street project uh was done through a tip and you required to have a consultant do that. Uh, our next one that we would probably that we are considering a tip project for would be uh probably Boylson Street. From the center of town up to the 290 Bridge. There is a debate, however, of whether or not we want to go that route versus going the. Uh, just us doing it as part of our chapter 90. It's mainly due to if it's a tip project, you've got to bring it up to the current uh complete street standards. And that gets a little bit more costly with sidewalks and and making sure you meet the five, you know, just like Main Street now has the five foot shoulder and the sidewalks on both sides. That's what would be required on Boylson Street. So as you know, uh, just south or just north of the cemetery is all those high retaining walls. My understanding, talking to John Knight, those retaining walls are actually in the town's right of way, just because the those lots are at the right of ways actually beyond that. But if we did that, the canyon walls may have to be moved and I'm not sure we want to go down that path. Uh, so that's a one of the, it's one of those we it's we weigh what is uh better? Do we go one way or the other?
Thank you.
Uh, the engineering department's been looking at short and long range utility improvement planning. Uh, looking for the fut- at the future, both short term and for the future. Uh, part of that is the Route 20 improvements for sewer, looking at, you know, working with UPS and working with other departments. On on moving that potentially forward. We're looking at potentially searing. Uh, a section in the north part of town, but we're always looking at uh, you know, long range and what benefits the town moving forward. And then we continue to do both private and municipal construction oversight. Uh, we do the construction inspections on the municipal stuff projects like water main replacements, sewer jobs. We also do the CA work, which we do. We've checked uh numbers for uh cost estimates and et cetera. So uh, we continue to do that. Uh, we see several high profile projects that are currently under construction or will be shortly, which is obviously. The Market Basket Site, the old Edgemead Drive-In uh in the wet eastern portion, what or what is known as phase two of the 40B project, which they started clearing. Couple of weeks ago or about a month ago, I guess. So we have those two high project, high profile and then there's a a ton of other smaller ones. I think there was a total of 13 or 14 smaller projects that are currently under constructions from anywhere from a duplex up to small site plants. So there was still quite a bit of construction, construction going on in Shoesbury, uh, both privately and municipally. Next slide, David, which is the stormwater. So stormwater, the end report is due September 30th of every year. Uh, we did the we we submitted the phase two last September, which would have been in 2020. Little bit more complicated, obviously, as uh Vincent, who does most of our reporting, had to do a lot of it by not being able to get into buildings. Part of the year two was to yet to do uh stormwater pollution prevention plans, or at least the draft for all of the public buildings that required it, which would have been. Our highway and water garages, uh Selco's garage, uh, the police station, town hall complex. Uh, there's one more and it deals with traffic in any place with its potential for automotive repair. But he's supposed to go in and do a tour of each one of those buildings and get so it's a little bit more complicated. He did what he could. Uh, the year three requirements are a little bit more, he has this year tests to start all of our uh wet and dry weather sampling. And actually doing more or actually more mapping of our existing system, which he is doing as part of the sampling. We have done. Most of our inspections on all our detention basins that we own. And we are going to be putting together a plan to start maintaining those basins, which is a requirement of the permit. Uh, we have roughly 200 and so kept um uh detention basins, wet ponds. Uh, infiltration basins that the town actually owns through subdivision that were approved from the 1970s and and beyond. Uh, so we are working on starting to develop uh. Contracts for that moving forward. Some of these are just mowing, they're fairly easy. Some of these are going to require uh major construction, so we'll start. You know, slowly, we're not going to just jump in and do all of them. We're going to look at it slowly. We can do some this year and then start looking at it slowly over time. Uh, as we move forward. The Stormwater Utility Fund is uh going as expected. As I had mentioned earlier, we were not able to uh contract out a fall street sweeper, which we had estimated. At that time to be roughly a half a million dollars, but what we were able to do is in lieu of that, we were able to do some of the drainage improvements. That some of these were on John Knight's list for 20, 25 years that have been on the list that we had not been able to get to. Uh, so we've been able to do that. Plus, we've been also able to fund some that with the town doing it. There, most of the street sweeping that they did was via overtime, uh, because we have to do most of these at night. Or early in the morning, i.e. the park, school, parking lots and things which we historically do at night, so we did, we are able to fund that through the stormwater utility. Business management. Uh, so. David Snowden started as our business manager on March 16th of 2020. Uh, less than 24 hours later, we were remote. Uh, he has yet to have his full staff in the office at the same time. Uh, it's now been almost a year. In that timeframe, he's had to learn his staff. Uh, some of them he didn't meet for months. Because he was in A week and they were B week. Uh, so he did a lot of it through Zoom, but did a pretty good job and he has. Uh, it's taken a little bit of time, but we have uh done major changes to some of the procedures. Uh, that I'm hoping carry forward for a long time. Uh, we have in implemented online utility permitting. Where contractors, and this was something that, to be honest, we've been trying to do for six or seven years. And we had about two weeks, then, you know, we push back or whatever, just because we'd never done it that way. We can't do it that way. Well, we go remote, no one's allowed in the building. How are we going to do permitting? So we went to online permitting and with uh. Andy's help and David's help, we were able to get online permitting basically within several couple of weeks after we left. Uh, we had some hiccups at the beginning. We had some contractor issues. Uh, we had access issues, but we were we've been able to resolve that for the most part over the uh this past construction season. Uh, and we are currently working on a way that the contractor can pay his fees online at the same time, which we're still working with the treasurer's office on to do that. Once we do that, then it the entire process will be done remote and 2021 will make some modifications to the actual permit. Uh, which we which we found we we could make those changes and make it even more streamlined. Uh, it saves, it's the intent is to is to save time and a contractor doesn't have to come into town hall. They can actually just do it all remote, kind of like a building permit. And that the contractors like it because they can do it at 11 o'clock at night. They can do it three in the morning or they they don't have to come into town hall and. And spend two hours or three hours coming in. They can just do it online at any at their convenience. So it we we know we've got some changes to make, but we are making them uh as we learn more and more as we move forward. We launched uh C Click Fix this fall or 2020 in the fall. And that was where it's a kind of a work order of software in which we're able to track a little bit better or actually significantly better. On complaints that come in, we can track it, we can be assigned to a certain person. They have to close it out when it's completed and um. We think that that's going to be successful. People can actually call in and or email in and actually, you know, it's for potholes or something, things like that, or a water mate li- line leak. They they say they can call that in and then it gets assigned to a person and then we can address it. That seems to be moving well. Most of the complaints have come in, seem to be addressed in a very short timeframe. And I know Da- David has statistics on that. One of the issues with COVID was, and actually this started just prior to COVID, but then it really got exacerbated during COVID and that is. How are we going to do final reads and how do we get that to the uh uh resident to pay their final bill on a uh. When they're ready to close on their house, because it used to be they would call in on, say, a Tuesday, they're closing on Wednesday. We would do the final read Tuesday morning. Tues- and then say it's 11 o'clock, we would issue the bill. They would have to come in, receive the bill, go to the bank, receive a certified check, come back to the town hall and pay it. Well. They can't receive it and they can't pay it. So and a lot of the banks weren't open, so how were they going to do that? And we were able to work out an agreement with all of the closing attorneys. And now we do a completely remote in which we the email everything to the closing attorney and the closing attorney sends us a. Uh, a check which is acceptable to the uh treasurer's office that that's acceptable. And we were able to do that. Uh, and again, this was something we actually started doing prior to COVID. But because of COVID, it forced us to actually do it. Very successful so far and we had did not get a single complaint from an attorney. And matter of fact, all the closing attorney says that's how we do it with almost most towns. And was surprised that we still did it the way we did it. So uh. It has really helped us with that with, uh, again, we used to have three people working on uh final bills. Now we can just do it with two. And it's just somebody comes in, we we. Send out our meter reader, he goes out and reads it and then comes back, gives the information, we just email it to the attorney, done. It it saves significant amount of time. David has been doing updates to our DPW webpages. Each of the apartment a- and just making again more user friendly. Uh, and we have definitely, uh, we're trying to work on improving our collection payments through uh mainly for the water and sewer division. We have uh spent been spending a lot of time on uh. Our meters, reviewing our meters, reviewing each one and spending a lot of time trying to uh make sure that all of our records are up to date. Which we weren't necessarily. That was, that's an, we really weren't doing that before. And so we've done spent a lot of time uh on making sure that our collection payments are up to date. Uh, we have seen several meters that we have replaced. Uh, mainly from some of the businesses that we recently had replaced, which uh due to issues with meters. So we've been do spending a lot of time with uh meter replacements too. We are working on potentially a new meter software, meter reading software, which we are currently in the process of evaluating. Which also would make this even more streamlined. Solid waste. Uh, so solid waste. Our relationship with waste management has been very good. Whenever there's been an issue, they contact us usually before there's an issue. The complaint log, and I don't have that with me, uh, but the complaint log has been almost negligible over the last six months to a year. We have received a uh, and if you look on the chart, there's been pretty much the same tonnage of. Actually, I'm kind of surprised 2020's tonnage was as low as it was. I assumed based on everybody cleaning out the garages and everything else that that would actually be higher. But it's not. Our yard waste went up significantly. Uh, and actually, waste management actually had a problem during one of the weeks where they had, they picked up more tonnage in two days than than previous ever had in a week. Yes.
Do you think the tonnage being the same is because the dumpsters don't have as much in them, but the people are throwing away more stuff at home?
Uh, so. The we don't, we only track the residential or.
Okay.
Waste manager picks up in the tipping fees that they pay for that. The commercials are done separately and we don't actually track that.
But that includes our public building dumpsters?
I don't, I believe those are not tracked. Those are.
Okay, so it's not that.
Yeah, these are residential only, or I mean, there might be a few small or small commercials that are on that residential route. Uh, that I think there's, if I recall, is like 20 of them. Uh, but they're very small, one bag, two bag, you know, very small, but it's, I'm actually surprised my, yes, I was shocked when I saw the number that that was on there. We did.
Add a a point of clarification?
Sure, David.
The the tonnage there is all of the tonnage that is collected by waste management and then brought to Wheel Abraider. At the tipping facility, so it's all public facilities and all commercials that are contracted or that are collected through the town. If if that help clarify the question, so it's all the tonnage that we would have collected in previous years.
Thank you.
We also in 2020, we we were collecting textiles or not we, but there was uh textiles were collected. Uh, and total, it's actually started in 2019. And to date, there's been 117 tons of textiles collected. Which is textiles that are then taking out of the waste stream at uh Wheel Abraider. Which I think is a pretty good tonnage, which is a good, pretty good amount. I mean, so that's basically, I mean, we've there is. Hundreds and more accomplishments that we have, but I'm not going to go into any of them. So if there are any specific questions. Please ask. One of the things that we are trying very hard to do in DPW is to start going from a reactive department to a proactive department. And trying to get to where we're spending more of our efforts. I mean, we're always going to be in an emergency and you'll reactive to anything, snow, ice. Broken radiators, whatever. But we want to be able to spend more of our efforts on proactive things so that we don't cost us as much in the future. That we can spend a little bit now, but pay less later. At least that's what we're trying to aim toward. And I think we were in a, we're starting to get towards becoming more proactive than reactive. So I'd like to open it up for any questions or comments.
Madam Chairman.
Any further, Mr. Kane?
Jeff, could you give us a few examples of your final statement? Because I'm always, I find operations to be much more interesting than some of what you folks do, but. There's always that, there's always that clash every. Year of, you know, how many warrant articles or water sewer, water sewer. So. I know from working with Keith on the Beal School project that a lot of what he. Contributed were changes today, looking forward to the lifespan and operational costs. When you look at, in in terms of operationalizing what you just said. How do you balance that need for year in and year in or year in and year out, pardon me? Reinvestment in some of the less sexy part of the business. While recognizing you've got to bring SCADA into the next century in order to. Get early detection, protect our folks and have a much more. Efficient operation overall, rather than having a series of orange trucks driving around town checking things.
So so what one of the things, and you brought up asset management as and Keith is a very good example of asset management. What we're trying to do is actually get a list of of our of our assets. And then start looking at life cycles of those assets. One of the things we have not done a good job for a long time is actually no, I mean, in our mind, we know what we have, but do we have, we have not put that on paper. What we have, when we should start looking at replacement. One of the thing, you know, let's let's look at our any of our vehicles. We'll replace a vehicle because it's the oldest. What should be, but is that really the case? What we should be doing should be replacing it based upon. You know, how much money it actually costs us in repairs. So a two thousand and eight may cost us, say. Five hundred dollars in repairs that year, but the two thousand and thirteen, for whatever reason, cost us twenty-seven hundred or three thousand. Well, we need to start looking at those life cycle and say, yeesh, you know. Maybe that that's not the best thing or and at the same time. We we should be replacing the. Air handler after every fifteen years. Well, the problem is and and Schuylsbury is not alone. So I'm not, you know, this is not a. New issue in municipal and beyond, sometimes in private. But we should should be, we we're replacing it twenty in twenty-five years. Well, A, it's no longer cost effective to run it. It's and usually costs us more because when it fails, it's usually catastrophic failure. It just breaks. And now you're you're spending four times as much to replace it tomorrow. Then looking at it, okay, we know that there's the life cycle on this. It's going to expire next year. Let's replace it next year and we have time that we can bid it and and actually. You know, do it correctly versus, well, this is the one we have to pick and it might not be the right one, but that's the only one we can find on the shelf today. You know, so we're really trying to look and and we're looking at it across the board. What can we do to? Help us long term, you know, why the water and sewer looking at. You know, looking at our asset management, you know, above ground, you know, where should we be? And then that's going to help us move forward with our, you know, our spending in our warrant articles. You know, how much should we be spending this year? Should we be you doing something different? So we're really starting to put a little bit more time and effort into that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Samia.
Jeff, thanks for the presentation from you and all of your team. It was well done. Just a quick question. Unaccounted for water in two thousand and twenty. Make any progress there? Covered a lot of areas that we made significant progress and particularly given the challenge of this of COVID. Where are we with that and what do you see as potential sort of gains there as well in two thousand and twenty-one and beyond?
So. Unaccounted for water is becoming even more trickier than we thought. Because we have done leak detection, we have done calibration of our. Of our major meters at the treatment plant, et cetera. And we're beginning to, I I strongly believe that we are not losing water. But it it it's becoming more and more, at least in my mind, that it's a, we're losing it, but not. Actually losing water. I think it's mathematically, we're losing water. We are doing a little bit more or we're doing quite a bit more through the business management division on replacement of some of our older residential meters. And really looking at some of the commercial meters where we potentially could have some issues. But if I were to look at the wastewater flows to Westboro and compare it to the water that we're pumping at our wells. They correlate. If we were losing water, we would be seeing a significant difference between water, pumping water and our wastewater treatment that we're sending to Westboro. Our average is about three point one pumped water and I may be off a little bit. At the at the treatment plant, oh, that's how much we're treating on average. But we're sending to Westboro on average, two point seven, two point eight million gallons of sewer. And but ninety-five percent of our town is water and only ninety percent is sewered. So if I do the math, it's pretty close. It's about, it's about even. So that's why I'm not hundred percent convinced that we're, we have a major leak somewhere. Because A, we've done leak detection and haven't found anything. We've calibrated all of our meters at the treatment plant. We've calibrated the meters at the wells. It's not there. So I'm making more and more convinced and I'm not necessarily convinced that we're not double counting something. Again, we're we're working with both Weston and Sampson and Tater and Howard to, you know, look at the math of it. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Chilabau.
Well, first of all, it was an excellent presentation. To illustrate even the high level things that we do. And and thank you for that. For, you know, any resident of the town who's watching a presentation on Public Works, they don't particularly care if it's a town project or somebody else's project. But if it affects their commute or, so could you just give us a brief update on one nine, one forty at the two ninety bridge?
I, yeah, I might need Andy's help on this because he participates in some of the biweekly meetings, though they've been shut down for the winter. So they were a little bit delayed in the fall for the installation or the the delivery of steel. When it arrived, it was very late in the fall into early winter. And they got the steel in and then elected not to pour concrete until the spring. So they should be pouring concrete, I would think, as soon as available in the spring. And then wrapping that up, I'm going to guess, Andy, nod, if you're incorrect, sometime in midsummer, is they should be complete.
Yeah, yeah, the biggest issue is the lead time in the steel. They couldn't get it like everybody else, so.
Just to get some sense of completion, anticipated completion.
Yeah, I think they were ready for steel and had to wait three or four months for it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. DiPaolo.
Um, Jeff, has gone to. I know you weren't, you're not billing monthly, but your reading meter is monthly now, right?
That is correct.
Did that, did that help identify or? Give you any indication that the numbers were closer than we thought and we weren't, we weren't losing or? How did that work out?
Uh, so. We read, we read monthly for about ten months. And then COVID hit in in March, which would have been, I think, April was when we started in nineteen, in two thousand and nineteen. So we ended up doing a hiatus for a couple of months, but what we saw in those ten or so months that we actually did it. It's more narrowed us down that we believe that the major issue is in. The reduced high zone. And that's the zone that we're now concentrating on. And we have Tater and Howard looking at that for us. On trying to narrow it down even more.
When you say. The metering is indicating that there could be potential problems in that zone in terms.
Not so much. No, not so much problems. It's just that it might be some metering issues in that area, the result of it. I I we don't believe that because again, we've done. Done leak detection and have not found any major leaks. When we've had the leak detection done, there might have been a leaky hydrant. There might have been, it was left on after a fire slightly that was trickling, but nothing of the magnitude if you go by the quote unquote. Thirty percent unaccounted for water, which would result in about a million gallons a day. We're not losing that. At least not that we failed to find.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one and maybe, maybe Dan can answer it. Just having seen in the news recently where there was a hack into the water system, I think it was in Florida. Just curious, I mean, I'm sure you can't expound upon too much what we do, but I'm sure there's something in place to protect our water supply from hackers.
So great question. And so it's been something that we've been looking at for a while and we're working with IT right now to get. An outside analysis to ensure that we have complete coverage of the system.
Great, thank you. There's no other questions on the board. I will thank you for the presentation. And all of you for being here. And I will also tell you that I think one of your greatest accomplishments, aside from everything that you're doing to. Communicate with the public is the C Click Fix. Having that available to look up when your trash pickup is going to be, to report a missed pickup, just the information that's on there, I think is so helpful for people. We're so. Cut conditioned to use an app. And I think the more information we can put on an app, the more. Happy people will be in the community, just the ease of being able to find information. And and also. Dan, I know you're probably the one hitting go on the messages when the water main breaks occur or there's some disruption to water and. Lately, I've noticed you're getting out with those before anyone can even question what's happening on the Facebook community forum. So to me, that's a success. And I just want to thank you all for your hard work.
Yeah, and I will second that because we had a water main breakdown on Lake Street about a year, year and a half ago. That was fairly significant. And we put a face, we put it out on social media almost as soon as we found out and literally received zero phone calls. Which.
That's where people go.
Yep. Our phones would have been lit up like Christmas trees. And we received absolutely zero calls. Other than after the fact and the person who was most affected basically thanked us. Which we don't get that very often either.
Well, I just heard the sand truck go by my street here, so I'm guessing you all have work to do.
Other sand truck.
Oh, is it a plow?
No, salt.
Salt, salt, that's right, it's a salt truck. Like, it's not a plow, right? I haven't been sitting here so long that it's snowing. Nope, not. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation. We'll look forward to the next one.
Thanks for letting us entertain you for the evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Hey, board members, that brings us to item number four on our agenda. Which is to review and act to appoint a Board of Selectmen representative to serve on the Beal Building Committee. And this is to replace Selectman Kane, who has served on that building committee for a number of years and. Will be stepping off the Board of Selectmen in May, and so we will need to have a representative from this board. Take his place for the final. Work to be done with that committee. And I believe we're acting on this now so that the board member that does take Mr. Kane's place is able to have a couple of months to sort of shadow the operation and make sure that they're comfortable stepping into the role. Is.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
To you and board members. Very tough act to follow, but if the board is willing, I am willing to try to follow in Mr. Kane's footsteps.
Thank you. Was anyone? That's interested?
If it's the best we can do, I second the most.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau, for stepping forward.
Was that a, did we have a motion?
We don't, I don't know that we have a motion quite yet. So if you'd like to make one, Mr. DiPaolo.
Well, I think Mr. LeBeau will do a great job too. And get a couple of months to to learn under the master, so that'll be helpful. So. I move that we appoint Mr. LeBeau as the Board of Selectmen. Representative on the Beal Building Committee. Now, is this, before I finish, is this? As of when Mr. Kane officially resigns or what, how are we doing this? Okay, right. I couldn't think of the word.
Nation would be the clearest way to do it.
Okay, so did we appoint Mr. LeBeau? Effective on Mr. Kane's resignation.
Second.
Okay, there's no further discussion. Mr. LeBeau.
Hi.
Mr. Samia.
Hi.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Hi.
And myself, I. Thank you very much for being willing to step in. I do know from watching those meetings, some of them are really quick, so you have, make sure that people don't get. People are used to that quick meeting now.
All right, we are gonna. Slow it down.
We are going to move on to correspondence. We have a letter dated January two thousand and twenty-one from the United States Census Bureau regarding boundary annexation survey. We have item number six is a letter dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one from Dan Cordo. The Office of Leasing and State Office Planning Regarding the Commonwealth Search for Lease Space. Office, letter number, item number seven. Yeah, is a letter dated February third, two thousand and twenty-one from Andrew Brennan, Director for Energy and Environment, MassDOT. Regarding the MBTA's Environmental Notification Form. Item number eight is a letter dated February fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. From Timothy Deschamps, Central Massachusetts Mosquito Control Project Regarding the FY twenty-two Budget Notification. That is something that we receive and enroll in every year. There's forty-four communities that are part of the Central Massachusetts Mosquito Control Project. And our share is approximately eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Items number nine, ten, eleven. And. Nine, ten and eleven also. Seventeen, I believe. And then twenty-one through forty-five are all emails. In support of an operational override. To support the school budget. So we're going to just take those as a whole. Right now. Okay, and then, let's see. Item number. A lot here. Item number thirteen is an email dated February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one from Missy Hollenbeck, thirty-eight Stony Hill Road. Regarding municipal joint comments on the Mass Clean Energy Plan. And Ms. Hollenbeck was asking if we had signed on to an effort led by Natick and Westboro. That had worked together to draft comments on the Clean Energy and Climate Plan for two thousand and thirty, which is a state level initiative. Item number fourteen is an email dated February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one from Nick Repetka, Highway Division Manager to Kevin Mizakar, Town Manager. Regarding the snowstorm report for February seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. That was five and a half inches of snow and it totaled a fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six. Dollars and eighty-one cents to remove it. Item number fifteen is an email dated February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one from Stan Transiac. Five sixty-two South Street regarding two and a half again. This is an email from Mr. Tron. This is an email from Mr. Transiak, who's concerned about the impact of people struggling due to the pandemic and unable to afford a tax increase should one be placed before the voters. And he implores the board to think about not placing one before the voters and the school department to limit their expenditures like a business. Item number 16 is an email dated February 9th, 2021 from Sandra Frick, Frick School Committee regarding a tri-board meeting. This email from Ms. Frick, the Chair of the School Committee, is requesting a meeting between the School Committee, Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee to discuss the school budget. I've been thinking about how to best proceed with this and I would like to propose a meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee as the two elected policymaking boards in our community. I think that would be positive in a productive way to help this process along. I think our board needs the opportunity to meet with the School Committee. I know we have a number of questions about their budget following Dr. Sawyer's budget presentation at their meeting last week. So I would propose that we move forward with a two-board meeting and then the School Committee would have their, or the Finance Committee would have their opportunity to meet and discuss with the School Committee at their public hearings around the budget in March. Just wondering if there's other thoughts or comments around how to proceed with this.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
Is this envisioned to be a Zoom meeting or is there a place large enough where those of us willing or comfortable meeting in a room would do so and then others could be on Zoom or how have we thought about that?
So I am thinking right now that it would be a virtual meeting of the two boards. Depending also on, on when we, when we schedule it, that could change if public health dictates that it would be safe enough and we can find a large enough space to meet the two boards.
That's fine. I, I was just wondering simply because I find it easier in a give and take to do so when, when you can do it in person, even from a greater distance. But that's fine by me. I think it's a fine path to go forward. I know I just, I have several questions to understand some alternatives or Plan Bs that I'd like to have a conversation with the superintendent and his assistant superintendent. So that sounds like a reasonable path. Do you have any sense of when that meeting might be?
I would like to look toward the beginning of March because the, we have a meeting on the 23rd and then that's when the manager is going to present his final budget. And then on the 24th, Dr. Sawyer is supposed to present the reduction plan for the school budget. And so then I would look to the next week as the earliest opportunity, I think, for a productive discussion where we would have all the information that we need in front of us.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I, I agree with going with a two-board meeting at this point. Especially if we do it as a virtual because, you know, even, even with just the two boards and, and minimal staff, you're talking like 15 people in that meeting. And I just think it's too unwieldy. And I think the board needs an opportunity to have a discussion with the School Committee directly on budget matters, what their needs are and what we see as the issues and the needs overall in the town are. And I think it would be more productive to start with, with the two boards and see if we can come to some consensus and a plan, at least work towards that. And then after that, it might be appropriate, depending on the timing, when we get that done. Maybe it would be appropriate to have a three, a three-board meeting and discuss where we believe we're going to head. But I think to get, to try to get the work done and, and really go through the budget and talk about the issues, if there is to be an override and what needs to be addressed. I just think it's more productive with, with two boards. I just think smaller number is better. And so I agree with you. I do think we need to be careful that we don't actually have that meeting until the board, our board and the manager are comfortable that, that we have the information that we need to make the discussion productive. Because I just think a general question, you know, very broad is, is not going to get us where we need to go. So I think we move as quickly as possible and have that as, as soon as we can. But I, I think you have the right approach.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further comments, I'm going to move ahead. Uh, let's see, we are on, item number 18 is an email dated February 10th, 2021 from Joseph Sawyer, Superintendent of Public Schools, regarding the School Department's Budget Recommendation. Item number 19 is a letter dated February 10th, 2021 from Nick Repetka, Highway Division Manager to Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, regarding the snowstorm report from February 9th, 2021, three inches of snow, $36,297.61 to remove. Item number 20 is an email dated February 10th, 2021 from John Dolly, For Jill Circle, regarding a vaccination site. And Mr. Dolly was just questioning why we don't have our own vaccination site for Schuylsbury residents, which Mr. Mizikar explained at our meeting last week, has to do with our being part of the Regional Public Health Alliance and we would just receive 100 doses of the vaccine if we were to go it alone, but by going with the Regional Public Health Alliance, we actually get a much greater number of vaccine appointments and that our seniors are able to go to the Worcester Senior Center in order to receive a vaccine. And I do know that our Council on Aging has been working with seniors in assisting them and making those appointments and making sure that they're able to take advantage of available vaccine doses. Okay, um, and then the rest of them, as I noted previously, items number 21 through 45 are emails related to putting an override before the voters. And I just would like to pause here. Just, just to recap, for those who may not be tuning into the school budget, that this stems from a gap in the School Department's budget, which is noted in correspondence, we learned of at the February 10th meeting of the School Committee, when it was outlined by Dr. Sawyer that there exists a $4.9 million gap between the manager's recommendation and the School Department's request. And I think it's important to note that the $70,552,000 recommendation for the School Department is 3.8% or $2,583,678 greater than their current FY21 budget. So there is not a reduction to the school budget, but the amount of funding provided is insufficient to meet the School Department's request. And Dr. Sawyer explained last week that without additional funding, they're going to be unable to open the new BL school as planned and will need to reduce their staff by approximately 50. So as I mentioned previously, at the School Department's February 24th meeting, further details will be provided on reductions to staffing and programs needed to close the budget gap if no additional revenue is made available. So we are all reading the emails and I, as Chair, am responding in real time with information on upcoming budget meetings and public hearings with the Finance Committee. And I'm sensing a frustration with the people that are writing to us with the process and a desire to have a decision about an override made quickly. And I do recognize that there's a sense of urgency, I think we all do. But there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done by this board and by the manager to confront this challenge. And it's not as simple as just asking the voters a question. And I think that suggesting that this is just a simple question minimizes the impact of the question on taxpayers. And it doesn't take into account the amount of work that needs to be done by the manager and the board in developing the right question to ask. So I, I would just like people to know that the board is always mindful and focused on the budget and prioritizes school funding to the greatest extent possible. And without the pandemic, our retirement obligation would have been funded this year and we would have had that money that we needed to fully open BL and avert this budget shortfall. And while the pandemic did not cause the budget deficit, it did accelerate the timing of a potential override and the discussion around it. And so while there's much more that I could say, I do want to pause to allow, allow other board members to comment if they wish.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I think that was well said, but I think in addition to that, it, it isn't a matter of just coming up with the number. We need, we, we need to have a plan. We need to be able to tell the public if, if this goes forward, what the plan is for the next three, four, five, six years. And we need to come up with a plan of what we're going to do to make that happen. And as you know, there's a lot of work into it. It is complicated. But it isn't as simple as just asking for X. There's, one of the big questions is, what about the next year? And what about the next year? And we need to be able to answer those questions, I think, at least be able to explain them to the public in a way that, that reflects an understanding of what the situation is going to be in the next three years. So I, I do agree with you. I, I think it's well said. It's complicated. And I think it takes a lot of thought to come to a decision of if you're going to have an override and how big, how big the number needs to be that's requested to do it right, to give some stability for the next three to five years. So I think we keep working on it and fully support what you said.
Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else to come before the board in open session, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Great. Mr. Lebo.
Hi.
Mr. Samia.
Hi.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Hi, good evening.
And myself, I. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair.